Good morning, it's Monday, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty, nine AM, this is the Muscatine County Board. Good morning, it's Monday, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty, nine AM, this is Muscatine County Board of Supervisors. Uh, I'd like to call the meeting or to order. The first item on the agenda is to review the agenda.
Vote approve.
I have a motion by Santos, a second by Nathan. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Item number three is discussion of possible action approved claims dated July thirteenth, two thousand twenty in the amount of six hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars and forty cents. Have a motion by Scott. Second by Doug. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Item number four is discussion of possible action to prove no ordinance rezoning approximately point two eight acres in Montpelier Township from C one commercial to C two commercial on the second of three readings. This is, or this is just, yeah, this just takes a motion, okay, it's not a public hearing, okay, sorry. I have a motion by Santos and I have a second by Scott. Any discussion? This is a roll call, the vote, Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Item number five is discussion of possible action to approve an ordinance rezoning approximately eighteen point nine two acres in Fulton Township from A one ag to R one residential on the second of three readings. Have a motion by Scott.
Second.
Second by Nathan. Uh, Eric, I think there were a couple of these that we, there, one of them where he had other comments, did you, were you able to get anything?
We had, we had no comments or correspondence following the public hearing last week.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I have a, uh, motion by Scott, second by Nathan, this is a roll call vote, Scott?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Item number six, discussion of possible action to accept the county recorder's report of fees collected for the quarter ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty in the amount of seventy-six thousand three hundred forty-one dollars and eleven cents.
So move.
Have a motion by Nathan? Second by Doug.
Is this, uh, is this any different than last year's?
Yeah, it was about, yeah, it was ten, twelve thousand dollars more. So it's an indication of, I always use the recorder's office as an indication of overall economic activity, it's driven by real estate transactions.
Sure, I said there were a lot of people refinancing with lower interest rates, um, a lot of people buying boats to, yes, how she explained to me, yes, so.
Okay.
It's interesting, okay, thank you.
So, we have motion and second, no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Item seven, uh, discussion of possible action to appoint zoning administrator Eric Furnas as Muscatine County's primary representative to the Lower Cedar Watershed Management Authority. So this is a, a discussion point here, if you guys, everybody remembers a year and a half, two years ago, uh, the Lower Wheat Cedar Watershed Management Authority went together, I went on as a representative and Eric, uh, I will say has been with us and he came on as a alternate member from day one. Um, it's at a point in this watershed where I'm kinda not very useful, Eric has been a great asset to the group and I think it makes sense to have him be our representative because they're starting to do, you know, actually watershed work grant applications and he has a lot more content knowledge and has been on a number of the committees, so I think it would make sense for us to appoint him as our representative.
Have we, have we got any grants over this watershed over the last year or two?
We did, we got, I think it was about a hundred and ten thousand dollars to hire a planning consultant, which has been done, we had a couple of really qualified applicants, so I was on the committee to review the RFP and the applications, made a recommendation to the board. We've hired a consulting group called Fire Engineering, they're gonna be handling the watershed planning, uh, development phase, we also just last week had a conference call where there's another potential funding stream, potentially fairly large through the NRCS. Um, so that watershed planner that we hired is gonna be helping, I'll also be on the committee to, to look into writing that grant application that, uh, could provide funds for flood mitigation, um, nutrient reduction strategies, that kind of thing, so. There's money out there and, uh, we've got some really good people on, on the WMA that know how to go after people from DNR and, and, uh, NRCS and that type of stuff.
What is the, when people say, I mean, I can understand water management authority, but what does watershed mean?
So the watershed is everything that drains into the Lower Cedar River, all the areas, all the tributary areas, the area that drains into the Lower Cedar is the watershed essentially.
Okay.
So, so Santos, what, what has happened, I think, after, basically, it's, this has been about the last five, ten years, they've started, well, maybe not that far, the, the, the federal government has under, started to understand that if you're gonna be effective in flood fighting and water management, that, you know, I, I, what's the number, for every dollar spent on the head end, it's, it's, it's considerable benefit at the, at the lower ends of the, so that these are approaches where they get partnerships by people that aren't normally, uh, aligned jurisdictionally, you know, like, like, you know, we're in Cedar, Lynn County is in our watershed, Lower Cedar watershed as well. And so we as a group kinda identify projects and activities that make sense to try to mitigate flooding and watershed issues, you know, on water quality issues, all kinds of stuff, so. It's actually a very, uh, some of these meetings are very, very interesting, some of the presentations we've had, had hydrologists and all kinds of stuff, I've, I've learned a ton about it, but, uh, it's, it's, it's a good place for the experts and, uh, people that know how to, cause it's, you know, heavy, this is really a good opportunity to get dollars for, you know, help for the, some of the efforts we're trying to do.
How often do they meet?
Quarterly.
Quarterly it's been, pretty much, yeah.
And then we'll, our committees will need, we've been meeting virtually obviously for a number of months, but committees will need, as typically committee meetings are virtual as well, cause there's people from north of Cedar Rapids to here.
Yeah, and it's typically been, we typically meet like on a Tuesday night in Se, in Tipton, I think it's typically been at the administration building there. It's been a pretty good group, I mean, it's been pretty active.
For clarification, will you go to the alternate, I know at one time you were.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be the alternate and I'll just attend meetings as, as I can, but I think you're a, a more ac, would be a more active board member and more valuable board member than I am.
Well, I think he's very qualified for that, so I'll make that motion.
When this group was originally put together, when the agreement was signed, cause I went back and looked in the minutes to, for the correct title of this group and saw where it was discussed then, that, that Jeff would be there for a temporary period and then it would transition to Eric, so that was kinda the plan from the beginning from what I saw.
Yeah, I think the thought was when you looked at the technical requirements for the position and the kinda knowing the ins and outs of what they'll be working with, it makes perfect sense to have our, you know, key people there.
And that, that watershed is a lot larger than, a lot of folks realize, it's tens of thousands of acres, tens of thousands.
Yeah, well, there's, I mean, you have all the, so, and I think Eric, pretty much all the cities, municipalities and counties that are in that watershed are a member of this and the SWCDs, so the Soil and Water Conservation Districts are also on there.
Yeah. How far, how far to the north and south is that?
Basically, just maybe the Cedar County area, I think, is about the, or, uh, sorry, Cedar Rapids area is the northernmost extent of the Lower Cedar, and then beyond that comes the middle and there's already WMAs for the middle and upper Cedar River watersheds. So the Cedar Rapids down to basically where it joins the Iowa and becomes the Iowa is the Lower Cedar, so, everything that's in Muscatine County certainly is Lower Cedar watershed. But, um, we're looking at the smaller watersheds, particularly for these types of grant activities like your Wausau Pennekit and your mosquito creeks, those are where a lot of your mitigation efforts or your nutrient reduction efforts would start, cause the runoff, it doesn't happen directly into the Cedar River, it happens in all the tributaries, you know, where all the farms are and the, just look flooding areas, now there may be some flood mitigation efforts on the Cedar directly, but a lot of it is the tributaries and what activities can you accomplish on those, you know, those good drinking streams.
When I was reading some of that stuff on the latest grant opportunity, it immediately popped into my eye, my mind, some of these areas along the Cedar where we have continual flooding and things that there might be opportunities somehow to, to attract some effort to those areas.
During our committee meeting, I threw those out there just to kinda get them on the radars, since they did mention particularly flood mitigation efforts, but for this NRCS funding, it, it almost needs to be a project ready to go.
Yeah.
We've kinda scratched our head in frustration, what we can do with a couple of roads that are continually being damaged, but I don't know that we would say it's project ready or have to, you know, cause there's a number of dwellings that would have to be bought out to either abandon and, you know, I mean, I'll talk to Keith more on it, but I don't think we're at a project ready point for any of those two, you know, roads that go under very quickly.
Yeah, and I think these are all areas that are just, do we have to keep in the back of our mind, cause you never know what opportunities come along and if we have a plan, you know, that we could implement.
Yeah, well, we'll get the plan developed and even if we don't get, you know, funding for a project in Muscatine County, anything that WMA does with success adds to our cha, our chance of success of getting additional money, you know, so maybe it's something that happens in Lynn County or Cedar County first, but it's part of our WMA activity, incidentally, when we have a project that we can really propose, we can show that we've done good with the money.
Wasn't it soybean or corn growers or somebody that was, uh, sponsoring a pot, a product, pretty good sized, uh, project up in the watershed in Cedar County somewhere, correct?
Yeah, I think it was maybe soybean associated.
Soybean, okay. I know, so there's a lot of different players that are participating and, and I think it's a great approach personally, because it, it's kind of a collaborative effort.
So what's the, what's the makeup of these groups as far as your committees? Or the water, or that, the DNR representatives or the other zoning administrators or?
Just every county's a little different, whether their zoning person is their flood plan coordinator as well, uh, but yeah, certainly, there's some planning and zoning people, there's NRCS, um, there's hydrologists, um, we have, there's a lady that's been a part of, uh, I wanna say maybe the Mill Creek WMA that's had experience with WMA projects, um, just two elected officials.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I made the motion.
So I had a motion by Santos.
I'll second.
I have a second by Scott. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same. And Eric, thank you for your efforts on that, I appreciate it. Okay, item number eight, discussion of possible action to prove the minutes of the July sixth, two thousand twenty regular meeting, so I'm a, motion by Nathan.
Second.
Second by Santos. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Correspondence, Santos.
Um, I got a couple different emails, I got one from KWPC, I can give you this one, Wesley, um, just in regards to coverage and, and fees and trying to make sure that they can still be serving the community. I got another one that UCC sent on property taxes, that you got from an email.
Hmm.
Um, from the school and a concerned citizen, Jeff?
Oh, you forgot about that one, yeah, yeah.
What was that, I'm sorry, so.
Um, I'll let, it was just a, a concerned citizen in regards to questions on if we're gonna get any rebates on property taxes.
Citizen said, since the, as the schools have not been or may not open, will they be getting a rebate on their property taxes from the schools? And so, I actually had a few interactions with them and shared them and said, you know, we, I think Santos and I both said to the county, doesn't set school levy rates, it's county only, and, uh, he was quite interested in different levies, so I shared with him the, the schedule of levies for the, for the county.
Um, also got a copy down on an email that I think, uh, speed limits in the
Yep.
Roads a little bit and some concerned citizens about their dogs. Um, also got a, another email with Christie Robey in regards to COVID costs, um, and I'm going to be meeting with her today at eleven AM to go over some of those costs and, so I had.
Nathan?
See, I'm trying to think if I had anything, um, other than I, I had those, not the one from, from Christie, but I had those, the other ones, uh, also.
Which other ones?
I'm sorry, I had the.
Cause he named several, so.
Yes, I had the, the speed limits on Western Avenue.
Okay.
Uh, posting questions, which forwarded to Keith and I think Keith was. Yeah, or did, um, he may have addressed it already with the gentleman. Um, the
Property taxes.
Property taxes one, um, also had one, uh, from Mr. Askew, concerned that he found a little bit of slag on his road.
Forgot, I got that one too.
And, you know, um, talked with Keith about it, we haven't put any slag on there, um, I, I hope someone's not messing with him, that wouldn't be very nice, um, I think that's it.
And I, my correspondence was pretty much wrapped up in all those same issues. Scott?
Um, I had the email on the speed on Western and the, uh, one I sold with the, uh, school tax rebate, that's all I had.
Doug?
I had the email from Ed, Askew about slag, it was on the shoulder, wasn't it, Keith, on the concrete?
Is that what he said?
Yeah, it wasn't on the road.
It was on the shoulders, like, yeah.
Yes. Um, I got the one about the speed limits, about the dogs getting ran over, I got the one on the property taxes, so the school hasn't been in progress. Got a phone call from Jim Meredith concerning the ditch cleaning, I talked to Keith, I still need to get back with Jim on that. And I got a call from Terry Holiday about Keetuck Avenue and what we're gonna do, when we're gonna open it or is it gonna stay closed? And I basically told him that's something that we're testing, it's an ultimate decision on. So, that's something we need to, about the future, what we're gonna do there, and I just wanted, and Martell McConaughey called about a sign on Klein Cemetery that they need to repurchase one and would like to go through the county engineer to order the sign, and then they'll pay for it, township will pay for it. Also, um, I just wanted to let everybody know, we did manage to get another race put up for July twenty-fifth, it'll be our big modified race, and then we have two big lake model races in August.
No more horse races?
We told them they were welcome back anytime next year, they're talking two times that they won't be coming, so.
It was a good event, they.
It was a very good event, and we also, uh, leased our beef building out for goat and sheep show, which started early in the morning and ran till, I believe they told me ten thirty at night, they had that many goats, sheep, probably seven hundred and fifty people at that end. And the way we had it set up, everybody was at the horse arena, our food stands would service both sides of the gate, so, we had the people coming up from the shows, getting their food and drinks, and then the people in the amphitheater from the horse races. Prairie Meadows puts the whole thing on, they pay the purse, they lease the track from us, it's a win situation with no cost.
Good deal. Okay, what about committee reports, Doug, did you have any committee reports?
I have no committees.
Scott?
I had no committees.
Uh, I had on the ninth, I had the EMA commission, um, that was an in-person, uh, meeting, we had a, Brian did a nice job of setting it up, we had a conservation, took temperatures in and out, uh, had social distancing and I thought it went pretty well, that meeting facility had a separate entrance, it worked very nice for the meeting. Uh, we'd hoped to see the new rescue boat, but as everybody recalls, that night there was some kinda nasty weather blowing through and they didn't feel comfortable bringing it out and up at that time, so, maybe another time.
Didn't have a rescue boat for the rescue boat?
Yeah, didn't need a rescue boat for the rescue boat.
There you go.
Uh, it wouldn't do good on ground anyway. Uh, on the tenth, Friday the tenth, there was a virtual meeting with the Mississippi Valley workforce area, and I will say, you know, as, as everybody knew, maybe you knew, didn't know, so we have the two job centers, one in West Burlington, one in, uh, Davenport, the, they put out an RFP, they put out an RFP, the incumbent, the incumbent in the Davenport Center was not bidding on the, the new service, and the incumbent in the West Burlington had, uh, they were not successful, uh, weren't selected by the committee, and then, so there's been an appeal and to the state and it's kinda put all that into limbo and as a part of that, there, the, the incumbent in the southern office was, we were, they were attempting to award the contract on the youth, well, they weren't getting back, didn't get back, and so, the state, I think, is gonna step in and run youth services in the meantime and we're gonna need to go back out to RFP on it again, so, it's, it's been a bit interesting down there, uh, but that's all moving forward and, uh, the new workforce board is, it's been a good process. That's one of the things I wanted to talk a little bit about, they're trying to set up, uh, do a board training meeting in August and looking for a venue and they'd like to find something in Muscatine, so I may have a conversation with a few of you about that, they were gonna try to do a couple of different things, we maybe should talk about that. Uh, that's all I had. Nathan?
On Friday the tenth, I had the Seventh Judicial Correctional System Board meeting, it was actually in person, there were about eight of us in this massive room, so we were nowhere near one another. Pretty routine, we're a little bit better off financially than we thought because we have a fairly higher level of federal prisoners in the, in the district than we thought we would have, but other than that, um, steady as she goes.
Santos? On the sixth, we had the executive board meeting with, uh, the new director, we went over the, the thirty, sixty, ninety and one-year goals in regards to West Liberty, um, and West Liberty has hired a, um, interim city director, uh, city manager, I'm sorry, and, uh, part of, part of our goals from the director's standpoint is reaching out to a lot of the stakeholders, um, particularly one of them that we've, uh, our board has really wanted to reach out to is making sure that we, um, continue to forge a good relationship with the fair board, um, trying to reach out with our new director, Kelsey, trying to, you know, brainstorm a lot of good things in the economic, um, spectrum for, for West Liberty. Um, and it's, it's really, the, the new director is pretty excited about, you know, getting us feet on the ground and getting out to the community and obviously helping with the economic and development grants that are hopefully available for the businesses, but on top of that, just, you know, continuing to, to get settled into the new role, so, very good meeting for us on the sixth.
Good. Okay, next item on the agenda, item number eleven is items with the administration office, Sherry, did you have anything for the board this morning? Okay, item number twelve is to receive information from county employees, any county employees have anything they'd like to share with the board this morning? Keith?
Just a quick update on projects. G twenty-eight, as I mentioned last time, they're paved up to east of Funk Hill, cause we started going through there past more houses and driveways and that, there's a lot of staging, there's a lot of reconstruction because a lot of those driveways that are out there are very steep, so we really couldn't raise the pavement, go on top, so let's tear out and go back at the original grade, so, the progress will be much slower going from here on, and on that project, we did have a request to pave at night, which we have denied, and if you wanna hear all the lies and work force, I'll be glad to tell you, uh, certainly within the specs, we don't need to allow that and, you know, we have, thinking if you live out there, you might, maybe Jim knows, I don't know where he lives, but you might not appreciate hearing that in the middle of the night amongst other things, and that really was an overriding concern.
Safety.
Up on Old Six, um, I think all the culver work is done now towards the end of the month here, then the southern work should start up there, everything else is pretty much, uh, finishing up, they have worked on the ditch on One Twentieth and was looked at last week, it, it was fine at the moment, but we've had a couple lines and looked at that again. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention, I attended the county engineer mid-year virtually, which I think there were about sixty-five people that attended virtually, there were that many there in person too, I'd say at least half the counties were there in person, so we'll see if we have any COVID outbreak, but since they met in person, but again, about half, uh, half, you know, half the people attended virtually, uh, there were a lot of good information there, the main thing, the director of the Iowa DOT pointed out that in, I think it was May, but I might be off by one month, road use tax was down twenty-six percent, it had came back up in June, uh, I think it was down like sixteen percent, the DOT, and they're saying they don't have enough data to know where we're going, they, right now, they're thinking it might come up to ten percent down and stay there forever, cause, uh, people aren't traveling and, uh, you know, I mentioned that in here before, we're already, you know, planning accordingly, if we take a half million dollar hit, uh, you know, what do we, what adjustments do we make, so, as we have a better idea, I will share that with you.
Sherry, have we heard anything on, uh, local op, option sales tax, have you heard Keith, any updates, we just had the second quarter filing would have been due, oh, it's not due till July thirtieth, is it? Okay, so we probably won't have final numbers.
Nick, well.
Cause that's another big risk to your budget, right?
Nancy gets, receives those numbers and, and monthly, and the last we talked, it hadn't changed a whole lot, but it was perhaps too early then to see what impact there is, but it didn't, you know, have some hopes that that's not gonna drop a long ways.
Okay.
That's really all I had, any questions?
On G twenty-eight, I did, um, have a question, I did get a, a call actually about a week and a half ago on this one, on, we're, we're up on G twenty-eight, we're going up, up the hill right where you get to the old plant, Band-Aid plant, and then once you get down further, all the dirt work that they're doing and then the sewer tiles or sewers drainage, what, what is the purpose of that? Cause they're doing a bunch of dirt work up on the hills, it's, almost looks like they're leveling it up, and then if you're on your left-hand side, if you go down further, there's actually cement, is that culverts that you're putting in?
Culverts.
Okay, all right, that's what.
Cause some of that on the hillside is probably the homeowners association moving their water line too.
Well, that was, it's, it looks like it's, it's teared up.
Yeah, that, that's.
And they're, and they're bringing in some pretty big pieces of equipment to level that out, but I don't know if that's something that, that the county's doing?
No, that's part of the contract, it's all part of the.
But then this, the culvert from the left-hand side, that is something that we're doing.
No.
No, that's part of.
Oh, that's actually, that's their own too. Ah, okay. That's what I didn't know.
Yeah, and, another factor in our decision is PCI, who's the prime and who's doing all the dirt work, they're working, you know, well ahead of the paper, so there's a lot of disruption there that we're trying to minimize. I'd actually say kudos to the residents out there, the complaints have not been, you know, significant at all so far, and, and there's definitely gonna be a day when you come out on your drive and you don't know if you should go left or right, when contractors supposed to keep them informed, but.
When the road gets.
That happens.
Sorry, Keith, when the road gets com, complete, there's a, is the road actually gonna be wider than what we have now?
Yes.
Are the marks that you have way on the outside, those little flags or whatever those things are, or is that where the shoulder's gonna end?
There, there's lots of staking out there, so I, I, it's probably just, uh, great control for paving, or it could be for the dirt work, but no, the, the pavement won't be wider and most of the dirt that's came off of that hill too, were used to widen shoulders and flatten forest slopes and that's, that's, if you're back behind where they've already. And that's, that's, if you're back behind where they've already paved, that's not all done. You know, it looks fairly finished. It's not, so.
And do we still look like we're on schedule to be complete?
Think we're on schedule. I mean, it was gonna be a long project. The, the one thing I can say is if, if the reason for working at night was the heat. Um, but you can also shift earlier in the day and stop earlier in the day and we don't, there are other options. But, um, I, I think if, that would be the only thing, if, if we have some extremely hot weather, then we're probably gonna give them some, them some mercy on working days perhaps. Which pushes a little later, but I think we're on schedule.
Can we get a chance to see if we can get a few more pictures of that? I know you sent those out before. I'd like to see some of those.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? Keith?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Any other county employees, anything to share? Brian?
Just gonna give you a quick COVID nineteen update for Muscatine County and this is as of Sunday, yesterday at ten AM. Uh, Muscatine County's had five positive cases for a total of six hundred and ninety. Uh, there has been zero deaths. Uh, we do have a total of forty-five. Five hundred and fifty-nine have recovered in Muscatine County. To date, none of our long-term care facilities are in a outbreak situation at this time. My office continues to monitor, uh, with the public health and other, other entities with us. Have we seen a tick? Yes, it's, it has gone up slightly. We're gonna continue to monitor this and, and see how it goes.
That was five cases from when? Did you say it's up for yesterday or?
As of yesterday, uh, the administration, that it starts at ten AM, so.
Yeah, I think if you look at kind of since the major opening up, probably the biggest one-day case increase we had was about fifteen cases one day. And if you remember back two months ago, we were regularly hitting those numbers. We, we have seen an uptick clearly, so it's important that people continue to practice some social distancing and hand washing and all of that. But, um, we aren't seeing the extent of major outbreaks like some of the other areas have. So hopefully we'll be.
Scott County, Rock Island County, they've had some significant numbers, so. Christie Robey, William, and Hurst, definitely continue to work on this and that's, as I said, Jeff, a lot of the things we need to look at.
Brian, one, one last more question. This may be for Christie too. Do you know what the turnaround is on our testing that we have? If somebody goes in and gets tested today, they'll know the results?
I would not be able to answer that. That would be something for Christie.
Okay.
I think that's in direct relationship with which type of test it is.
I, I just had that, somebody had asked me that, if we knew that. And there was concerns because there was comments that in, in some of the bigger cities, the turnaround's almost taken almost a week. And the infection could get further throughout the family and potential. And so I, I didn't even know how to answer that. So I was just like.
I know a couple of weeks ago, I, you know, it was probably more than a month ago, I did qualify for the Iowa test. And went up on a Friday up to Davenport, went through the process. And I mean, by the weekend I had my results as, as negative. So, I mean, we're doing a lot. Again, metropolitan areas, it's kind of hard to say how.
And if I wonder, I didn't, I didn't know that, sure, you know, so.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Anybody else, anybody in the board this morning? Okay, I don't know, Bill, did we have public on the phone today? Anybody on the public wishing Bill's got you unmuted? Your, please state your name and issue. See anybody, Bill?
There's no call in. We have one person that's on the web and they control their own mic, so.
So we have one individual. Is there anybody interested in making a comment? If so, uh, do so at this time. Hearing nothing. We move on. The meeting is adjourned.